I would be like, my name is Shaitan Rajin, Bismillah. And Rameen. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Salaam alaikum.
Salaam alaikum. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we do. If you can.
I hope it is clear.
Clear.
Okay. I'm very happy to see today, mashallah, so senior people joining in actually. And we had some registration of more senior people. So we were actually waiting to start. But I think that we should start now because otherwise it's a very long standard on framework. So we may need time. So let me start. I would be like, my name is Shaitan Rajin, Bismillah, Rahmanul Rohim. Well, us, inna l'insan al'fikhus, illa lajin a'aman wa milu sholihati wa tawasaw bil haqti wa tawasaw bisab. Rahmanul Rohim, Rabbi Shrahli Sadri wa Yassirli Amri, Wahluul Lukdatam Min Dusani, Yafkahu Qawli. This is our second experience of doing a public hearing completely by webinar. But the other one was via a video conference. A lot of our public hearings have a webinar arrangement, lot of them actually. But I think this is the second one which is purely a webinar based public hearing. And while at AOFI, we have been using this technology for quite some time now. But given the present scenario in the whole world, I think a lot of people are moving to that and that's why I believe this time we have got very good, very good senior level attendance in that. One, one thing I would like to request everybody that while you are not talking, please keep your microphones muted. Because mashallah, so many people are connected. So if your microphones are muted, then it is better for everybody. After every sometime, I'll be taking comments and asking for comments etc. So I'll be taking comments one by one at that time. In the meanwhile, whenever you want to add a comment, there is a chat window. You can send that through chat window to our colleagues. We will, we will take the notes of those points as well. Sister Farida will take care of that. In addition, you can also go through, go through the documents later. Because maybe this time might not be sufficient and you can submit your comments by email later. There is no urgency for those comments. This is standard. We have at least two to three more public hearings to be conducted on this one. Before I go for details, I would like to take you through about two important things. Number one is about the importance of the public hearings in the standard setting process of AOFI. We believe that standard setting is not just a process of sitting in the boardrooms and doing the backend and bench based and the desk based researches and coming out with some rules which are at times which are alien to the practical world or at times which are not, not, you know, in line with the industry practices. So one of the most important steps of our standard setting process is that whenever we complete the exposure drafts, we take those exposure drafts and we take them to public for written commands as well as for the comments through invited through, through public hearings. Normally, as a matter of practice, conduct at least two to three public hearings at time even more than that. I believe that this framework is very important. So maybe the number of public hearings will be more. With this public hearing, we are also completing another important project which with this standard, we are also completing another project which is revision of FAS one, our financial accounting standard number one, which is related to the general presentation and disclosures in the financial statements of Islamic financial institutions, particularly Islamic banks. So that these two projects we have completed side by side and some of the public hearings will be combined. This public hearing initially was planned to be combined, but we decided to keep it separate because we were not sure whether a completely web based public hearing can be taken like four to six hours long or not. Today's experience for sure will help us in understanding that thing. So that was about the importance of this public hearing. Let me mention one thing clearly that whatever comments we receive from you in writing or in verbally during these public hearings, they are all noted. They are taken, sometimes I may answer you. But my answer does not mean that we are, we are dropping your point or killing your point. My answer means that I'm trying to clarify the concerns that you have in your mind. But at the same time, we still would like to take those comments to the working group and to the board. And all comments are compiled together and taken to the working group. And then obviously at times board does not have enough time to see all the comments, but all important comments are taken to the board as well. Even if I may have a disagreement with you, but your point is, is always taken and taken to the working group and to the board. Another aspect that I would like to talk about in this respect is that public hearings also play an important role in AOFI's connection with the, with the, with the, with the important people and the experts around the market. So it's not only about comments on one standard. We, we highly appreciate receiving comments of whenever we issue a pronouncement, whenever we issue an exposure draft in different areas. Today, I was so happy to see and I would like to welcome again Dr. Kabir Hassan, who is member of our governance board, but he was, he was kind enough to spare valuable time for this, this framework which is on the accounting side. So I'm so happy to see people like him. And all, every time we have scholars and scholars and experts running in. May I request everybody to keep your mics mute? And may I request Sister Farida to keep everybody mute, please? I was having a sound from background. With regard to the standard setting process that we have, we have multiple stages and while we, we, we involve different public, public, public comments through public hearings. But for some of the standards, we also conduct certain workshops which are on more focused issues. And we may, in this respect of this framework, we may be conducting a workshop. It's not finally decided, but it may be a part of the agenda in next few months. However, we intend to finalize this exposure draft within this year, Insha Allah. Most of you I can understand and I, I can see so many names which are already, you know, we have met personally earlier. So I can, I don't know, think that it's good to like waste everybody's time and going for all the details with regard to the standard setting process of AOFI. However, at this point, if somebody has any question with regard to AOFI's standard setting process or with regard to these public hearings and their objectives, please feel free to ask the question. Okay, I can't have a question. Is there a written question, Sister Farida? Can you confirm on the chat window? Sister Farida, can you confirm me? Is there a question on the chat window? Okay then. So let me, let me continue then. Now coming to this standard, which is actually technically not a standard. This is the AOFI conceptual framework for financial reporting by the Islamic financial institutions. Let me give you a little bit background. The first framework was for, what was developed in form of two statements. One was on objectives of financial reporting and second was on the principles of financial reporting for Islamic financial institutions. Those standard, those, those statements were later superseded in 2010, if I'm not mistaken, by a comprehensive framework which included most of those principles and was adding upon certain important aspects. More recently, more recently, we have, we had two challenges. The first one was that AOFI in 2016 revised its standard setting process. And the strategy, the overall strategy was revised and that strategy included certain changes from the previous approaches. And one of the ideas was to bring the standards closer to the generally accepted accounting principles, including IFRS. Those of you who have been attending earlier public hearings as well, have reviewed our more recent accounting standards, must have a fair idea about how we have tried to bridge the gaps between the accounting frameworks. The new strategy says that we would like to avoid duplication of standards and avoid unnecessary differences. Necessary differences only include where we have a Sharia consideration which requires a specific accounting treatment. For example, two contracts may not be combined in one contract. For example, receivables may not be discounted and retrograded. So things like that which impacts some of the accounting principles. And we are going to discuss some of them in this public hearing today, Insha Allah. The second aspect that we, 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 we had was with regard to the specific Islamic finance structures that IFRS or other generally accepted accounting frameworks do not, do not reflect upon the exact true nature of some of the Islamic finance structures and their respective risk profile etc., which is, which is done different from the conventional finance transactions. So these are the areas that if we have a very specific Sharia consideration or if we have a Islamic finance transaction structure which is different from the conventional structure, in those situations only we can hold, we can, in those situations, we can have a different accounting standard or a treatment. Coming to the framework, considering these changes in strategy and the second challenge was that, as I would like to mention about with regard to this, that IFRS also revised their framework more recently. So considering that on one side, our standard setting strategy had changed and we had significantly improved some of our standards. And on the other hand, IFRS has also, IASV dress accounting stand board has also revised their framework. So we felt that it is important that at this point juncture, we should revise our financial reporting framework. The financial reporting framework serves two different purposes. The first purpose is, the first purpose is that financial reporting frame, the financial reporting framework provides the overall guidance to AOFI accounting board for the boundaries that need to be applied while developing the accounting standards. It means that the primary purpose of the framework is to govern the overall boundaries and guidelines which are necessary for developing standards on specific matters. So the broad principles and core principles are contained in this framework. The framework is not a standard. So as I mentioned, that framework's first purpose is this. However, AOFI framework serves another purpose as well. The second purpose that AOFI framework serves is that AOFI standards, if you allow me a second, I think there is some disturbance. Sister Farida, there is a user that maybe you need to remove. Sister Farida, can you hear me?
Actually, Sister Nofe is available now. She can hear you brother. She will do the, the needful.
I think there is a user, I, this is disturbing two, three times. So my request is everybody keeps their microphone muted. Whenever I request for comments, you can always make it unmuted and you can use it. I'm sorry for the disturbance. There was a user having like some sound in between and it was disturbing me. I'm, my apologies. Let us continue on that. So the second part that I was talking about was that AOFI framework on the accounting standard side, as we discussed earlier, that it has, it has a decision, it is based on a decision that we will not be developing, we will not be developing overlapping standards. It means that there are areas where we do not have our own accounting standards. For example, property plant and equipment, general treatments or inventories, we do not have our accounting standard. Our framework and our standard number one says, and the new one further clarifies it very clearly, that in case of AOFI not providing a specific guidance with regard to a specific matter, the management of the respective institution should adopt an accounting policy from the generally accepted accounting principles, which in most cases would be IFRS. Insofar as it is not against the framework of AOFI and insofar as it is not against Sharia principles. So while as I mentioned that the framework's primary purpose is to provide guidance to the accounting standards board for developing the standards, but in absence of a specific standard, it also serves the purpose of the guidance material from where the guidance is to be sought and, and, and accounting treatments are to be devised. Even the earlier framework and earlier financial standard number one had this thing, but the new ones have this, this thing more clarified. So accordingly, although this one, this framework is not a standard, but it has been given an authoritative status, which means that in absence of a standard, in particular, this framework shall be applied in devising principles as applicable on the, on the, on the accounting treatment side. Any comments? Do we have any comments? I have received a comment from brother Munir that the first purpose of revision of the framework was not clear. Maybe my sound was not clear or something. Let me quickly repeat that. The, my, my point was that AOFI revised its accounting standard strategy in 2016. And according to that strategy, we had to, we had to bridge the gap between AOFI standards and IFRS and only necessary differences should have been there. The decision is that the necessary differences are primarily number one. Primarily number one related to a specific Sharia guidance. For example, the Sharia requires that two transactions cannot be combined in one. So we need to consider the effects of both the transactions even in accounting part separately. Similarly, according to Sharia, a debt cannot be sold against cash or cash or discounted in cash. It means that we cannot discount receivables. So these are just few examples. There are more examples that we will discuss in this framework. In a nutshell, I would like to summarize that this framework revision is a part of the overall strategy of AOFI under which we are bridging the gap from the conventional frameworks. And we are trying to bring them closer to IFRS and other generally accepted accounting principles, except for either the Sharia compliance issue is there or the Islamic finance product has characteristics and risk profile different from the conventional transactions. Now we have received more questions from our brother Musamil Kasbati, Waalaikumsalam. If the AOFI has a FAS, can we refer to IFRS for example, investment entity in spite of FAS 23? The, the rules, brother, brother Musamil, I think the answer will be very clear when we discuss the hierarchy of decision making. So allow me some time to reach there so that we can do. However, with regard to concepts missing in AOFI, there are two different situations. One is where AOFI standard has defined the core principle but has not gone into details. So if the AOFI standard has provided the core principle and does not go into details, you can go and find those details in IFRS or other generally accepted accounting principles. But that should not be against the core principle in the AOFI standard. For example, our standard does not give our investment entity exemption. If the investment entity exemption is not there, then you cannot go to IFRS and find that exemption there. However, in some cases, we provide the guidance that this should be done at fair value. This valuation, this item should be valued at fair value. And we do not provide enough detail how to determine the fair value in that situation. You can refer to IFRS 13 and you can, you can find the solution there, how to find the, the fair values. So this is just one example, but we can discuss more examples later. Any other question? Okay, I will, I will remove, I will skip the parts related to the preface and introduction except for the main changes. Because most background I have provided already, but one part of the over, of the, of the introduction, that is the principal changes from the previous one, we want to provide that. We want to discuss that. Number one, the conceptual framework has been made an integral part of AOFI FAS under separate chapter of objectives, authoritative status and applicability. This why I am mentioning because in some situations, we had noted that AOFI standards were silent and people referred to IFRS and adopted a treatment which was apparently against Sharia and apparently against AOFI's framework. While they were still claiming that they are overall, on overall basis, they are complying with AOFI framework. So we, we made it very clear from the regulate, from the, from the, from the authoritative status perspective that before referring to IFRS or any other generally accepted accounting framework, you need to refer to AOFI's framework first and see whether that treatment is in line with AOFI or not. So it means that, it means that if an entity is, this has answered to your next question, brother, doctor, brother Musa Alapshi. This is an answer to your question as well, sir. Because if you see sir that we are having an entity that is applying AOFI framework. If it applies AOFI framework and it is still refers to IFRS because for that specific area, AOFI standards are silent or there is no specific guidance available or the standard is, there is no standard at all or the standard is not providing enough guidance. So we can refer to other treatments. Let me take you to that slide first. I think it may, because we are receiving questions related to that. So let me take you to that hierarchy first. The standard says, this framework and also the standard says, accounting policy shall be developed by the institutions according to the following hierarchy. Number one, FAS specifically addressing the respective transaction, other event or condition or other pronouncement issued by AOFI. So it means that if we have a very specific FAS available on the transaction, then it has to be or any other pronouncement like a technical lease or guidance note that has to be applied. Item number two is FAS on similar matters. So for example, if we were not addressing Musavama in a standard, but Murabha related treatments are there. So insofar as the Murabha related treatment are also similar to Musavama, they should be applied. We cannot say that AOFI does not have a standard on Musavama. So we are doing altogether different treatment. The third part is generally accepted accounting principles as applicable in the respective jurisdiction insofar as these are not against the conceptual framework and Sharia principles and rules. So here we applies where we are on IFRS. So means that, for example, we have, we have an example, very common example, we normally refer to, but I'm referring without the name of the institution. There is a very large Islamic financial institution that AOFI, that follows AOFI standards. However, since AOFI standards till now do not have the Sukuk standard on the issuer side, the originator side. We issued the exposure draft and that was near final, but we are waiting for the Sharia board's decision on some matters to before we issue it. Because the Sharia standard is also being finalized at the same time. So the main issue is with regard to that standard, the main issue is that the standard was not there. Still it is not legally effective, only exposure draft is there. So that institution that we are referring to actually have large issue, issue of Akala Sukuk. And they kept the Sukuk on balance sheet and they did not recognize the sale of assets to the Sukuk holders as a true sale. Means that they recognizing from their balance sheet. The, the point that I want to mention here is that while in absence of, in absence of our standards, we allow referring to IFRS, yet you need to first check whether those IFRS that you are going to follow are providing a treatment which is not against the conceptual framework or against the Sharia principles and rules. So in a situation that I'm mentioning about, the situation I'm mentioning about, we issued a technical release earlier saying that this, this Sukuk should be off balance sheet considering these factors as are required. Thank you, sir. So now coming back to, coming back to the hierarchy part. I'm sorry, I missed the slide. Okay. So the last part is the management judgment as long as it is in line with the conceptual framework and the Sharia principles and rules. It means that even if IFRS is silent on a matter, you can still apply accounting policy and devise an accounting policy which is in line with the concept, this conceptual framework and the Sharia principles and rules. So according to this whole hierarchy which is here in this framework, but also provided in financial accounting standard number one. Because whenever legally the standards are adopted, the framework is not adopted as a part of it because framework is not given a standard number. We, we had given it a thought of considering it, giving it a standard number, but then we decided that rather than giving it a standard number and considering it as a standard, it is better that we just refer to it and we just include it as a, as a, as a part of authoritative status in both FAS one and the framework. Let me complete the main differences part before we move forward. A hierarchy for selection is provided which we discussed. The revised conceptual framework makes explicit requirement that compliance with Sharia principles and rules is paramount. This is one of, again, one of important points. This is one of, again, one of important points because when we develop our standards, we develop them according to a specific understanding about a product's nature and details. And that product's natures and details are according to the Sharia standards of AOFI. Mostly ninety-nine percent. And all our standards say, accounting standards mention the new ones that these are to be read with the relevant Sharia standards. So it means that we, we would, we, we, we want to, we want to categorize and categorically mention that our accounting treatment is linked with the Sharia characteristics. Which means that, for example, there is a ABC institution in XYZ country. And that ABC institution is doing a Murabah transaction which is not following AOFI Sharia standards characteristics. Considering our, our practical constraints, we cannot say that all type of Murabah transactions in the world, whoever does it can be covered in this standard, although standard is a principle based and you can still find the principle based guidance. But the way how we characterize the transaction and the way we find the characteristics which are assigned for the accounting purpose and the accounting treatment is defined according to the product, this all depends on following the Sharia principles and rules. Let me take a very quick example again. For example, Ijarah Munthi Abitamli has very slight differences from a conventional finance lease. But those differences are important because they are important from Sharia perspective. So if an institution follows those principles, it means that it, it, the transaction should be accounted for in line with the AOFI Sharia standards, AOFI accounting standards. But if the standard does not follow, the entity does not follow the AOFI Sharia standards, for example, in respect of risk and reward and all that, then there is a big risk that some of the transactions might be misrepresented because they are not exactly the same as per AOFI Sharia standards for which the accounting standard was defined. So we very clearly say that paramount is the Sharia for this purpose and this is, this framework has discussed this thing at multiple stages. May I request Sister Nuff and Sister Farida to keep everybody muted because again there was a sound from the back end. The term quasi-equity is an enhancement of the term unrestricted investment accounts which were earlier equity of unrestricted investment accounts which was earlier used. Quasi-equity include all type of unrestricted investment accounts and similar instruments such as funds related to Sukuk that show characteristics of equity. The term of balance sheet assets under management is a broader term representing restricted investment accounts and other similar off-balance-sheet instruments, including Wakala. The primary and secondary users of financial statements have been identified. Primary financial statements have been modified and the concept of comprehensive income has been introduced. Earlier AOFI standards did not have this concept. IFRS brought the concept of other comprehensive income and other comprehensive income in two thousand ten, if I am not mistaken, ten or eleven. We did not bring it immediately because there are some Sharia issues with that as well, with regard to the attribution to equity of equity of undisputed investment account holders of quasi-equity and others. Other statements that like a statement of Zakat and statement of charity fund and statement of Karth fund are now relocated to the notes rather than being primary statements. The revised conceptual framework contains a discussion on control of an asset or business. The concept of reporting institution responsible to prepare financial statements has been introduced. Virtual entities are included as reporting institution to cover the emerging Sharia complaint protection services. A chapter about Sharia principles and rules that serve as foundations for determining accounting principles has been included in the revised framework. This is one of the important things. Brother Harun, can you note down one thing? Brother Harun? Brother Harun, Sister Farida, if you can just note down, let me mention for the benefit of the users that although these statements have been moved to the notes, but a new statement with regard to the income and returns attributable to quasi-equity holders, a new statement has been introduced. So I think we should mention in H that as well. Okay, right. Okay, before we finalize the standard because still it is an exposure draft stage. So one of the statements that has been added, these are removed, but not removed, these are transferred and relocated to the notes to the financial statements. But one of the main statements that has been added is with regard to the, to the, to the returns attributable to equity of invest of a quasi-equity or equity of undisputed investment accounts. Now I am taking you to the main objective of the, now let me, let me mention normally what we do in public hearings. Depending on the size of the standard and length of the standard, we try to cover maximum area and some parts actually we try to, to, to read out and then take comments. Here I will try to stick to some very important points only. For other points, we can take comments, we will go paragraph by paragraph, we'll ask for comments. But, but with regard to important aspects, I'll, I'll take you through. So objectives for sure are important. AOFI conceptual framework for financial reporting by IFIs in to outline the concepts and core principles of accounting and financial reporting. That shall serve as the purpose, as the, as the foundation for the AOFI accounting board in the process of development of AOFI FAS and other relevant pronouncements. The concepts and core principles of accounting and financial reporting provided by the conceptual framework shall also serve the institutions in selecting and application of accounting policies in absence of a specific FAS for a class of transaction, events or, or other event by way of providing the context to understand and interpret respective phases. The concept and core principles of accounting and financial reporting provided by the conceptual framework may also serve as the base of basis for selection and application of accounting policies for institutions other than IFIs in respect of Sharia compliant transactions. This part three is important because although AOFI's main framework is, is for Islamic financial institutions, but we are talking about Sharia compliant transactions and Islamic finance transactions that there is a counterparty effect to that as well. Earlier, some of our standards used to have only one side accounting, like Murabah standard had only one side accounting. But our new standards, including new Murabah standard, have the dual side accounting, means that the accounting for the customer has been defined as well. While we know that there are regulatory challenges in this matter, but we believe that going forward, this will, as, as Islamic finance will grow, there will be a growing need for the, the transaction accounting like Sukuk. For example, Sukuk are not always issued by Islamic financial institutions. Lot of time they are issued by the governments and corporate entities. But their accounting treatment should be in line with Sharia and that's why we are defining the accounting treatments for, for the instruments on both side. Although we know that there are regulatory challenges on their implementation. Principle of Sharia compliance override says that nothing, it is, nothing in this, nothing in any of the AOFI FAS or this framework should result in a Sharia non-compliance. So the Sharia compliance override requirement is there. Authoritative status we discussed already, hierarchy we discussed already. I would like to take any comments if you have any comments on these sections. The conceptual framework provides the core concepts and principles of accounting and financial reporting applicable on the general purpose financial statements of the institution that are operating principally in line with AOFI Sharia standards. The conceptual framework shall be read and implemented in the context of AOFI Sharia standards. As I mentioned already, that when you define a transaction treatment, you need to consider the specific context and Sharia standards are the ones who provide the specific context in that part. An institution shall not be considered as compliant with the conceptual framework unless it has complied with the conceptual framework in its entirety along with compliance of the applicable phases. The conceptual framework provides principles of accounting and financial reporting for an institution and does not intend to provide a specific accounting treatment. The conceptual framework does not override specific requirements of any FAS for any transaction, event or condition. Any comments? Definitions, I will stick to only important definitions, but I will take comments if anybody want to add any comments, we will be taking those comments. But on, on overall basis, I am not going to repeat all the definitions except for a few important ones. Asset is more or less similar to the IFRS definition and the definition that we have been using. Central Sharia Board definition is coming from our governance standards. Control definition is, is, is close to IFRS but not exactly as per IFRS. But the main two conditions for that are same as per IFRS, but when we say that when it has substantially all this can reward incidental to ownership of such asset and business, this part is mainly coming from the Sharia side. So this, this definition is slightly different from conventional transit, definition from IFRS. Although the main definition is same, but I would say rather the main difference comes, arises in some of the interpretations, particularly with regard to the uniformity of substance and form and with regard to the, to the, to the override of the Sharia override. For example, what is a true sale, we, we would consider it primarily from Sharia perspective and secondarily from the IFRS. So these are some of the differences that would generally be there. Expense definition, fair value, historical cost, income, it's IFI. One thing, one thing I would like to clarify here, that Islamic financial institution definition that we use in our governance and accounting standards include the standalone branches, divisions and windows of conventional financial institutions that offer products and services in line with Sharia principles and rules. And we have a separate standard on these windows as well. So it means that it covers the windows as well. So framework, when we are talking about the framework, the, with regard to the window, even conventional institutions in those countries where AOFI standards are adopted, with regard to the window, they need to follow the framework. Was somebody asking a question? There was a sound. But I think it's better if you always send by chat because I can see that and I can respond that very easily without disturbance. Liability, why I am, I, I'll, I'll read the liability definition, it is slightly different from the, from the, from the IFRS definition, slightly different. Because main difference is with regard to quasi-equity fair, I will reach later. Liability is a present economic obligation, legal or constructive other than quasi-equity. So one main difference is other than quasi-equity because the quasi-equity has its own specific characteristics. That is enforceable against the institution resulting in outflow of economic resources. Liability is result from project, past transactions, other events or conditions. A future commitment is not considered a present obligation for the purpose of this definition. Mudarba definition is mainly coming from Sharia side and it's defined from that side. Owner's equity is the residual interest in the assets of the institution after deducting all the liabilities and the quasi-equity. A participatory stakeholder has a contractual arrangement with the institution to share the profits, losses and residual interest in the net assets of the underlying asset or business. Quasi-equity, now this is one of the important definitions, we have inserted it in more recent standards, but we, here we are defining it in the framework for the first time. Quasi-equity is an element of the financial statement that represents participatory contributions received by an institution on a profit sharing or participation basis. It has primary characteristics of equity that is in case of loss unless negligence, misconduct, breach of contractual terms is proved. Institution is not required to return the funds to the fund providers and the fund providers share the residual interest in the underlying asset or business. And certain characteristics of a liability, that is, it has a maturity or upward option of redemption and certain specific features, for example, that is the rights of the fund providers are limited only to the underlying asset or business and not on the whole of the institution as well as do not, they do not have certain rights associated with the owner's equity. If you compare with IFRS framework, probably quasi-equity concept is one of the fundamental differences that we have from IFRS framework. Under IFRS framework, most of the quasi-equity instruments are considered as a liability because of item two mentioned here because they have a maturity or upward option of redemption. However, we believe that, that does not serve the true, serve to represent the true nature of Islamic finance transactions and the risk associated with that and the risk profile of those transactions. So accordingly, we believe that having a quasi-equity distinction and representing the undisputed investment accounts and other similar instruments as quasi-equity has a better reflection of the reality of the transaction in line with the Sharia principles and rules and in line with the, with the contractual terms which are there. Sharia principles and rules are in line with the same hierarchy as we defined in our governance standards. So we have to put it here as well because in case of interpretation issue, you need to define what are Sharia principles and rules applicable and these are to be defined in the same hierarchy. Number one, AOFI Sharia standards. Number two, regulations of the respective jurisdictions regulator. Number three, rulings of Central Sharia Board. Number four, financial accounting standard related requirements and approvals and rulings given by the Sharia supervisory board of the institution. Let me clarify one thing. If you go through old AOFI standards, means that those who, that were developed in between nineteen ninety-two till two thousand seven or two thousand eight, you will find that old standards contain the Sharia principles of the product. At that time, AOFI did not have a Sharia board and there were no separate Sharia standards and actually the Sharia, the best Sharia guidance available globally was available as appendix to AOFI accounting, accounting standards. However, in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine onwards, our Sharia standard boards, Sharia board started working separately and now we, we are proud to have you know, the top quality Sharia standards around the globe which are limited in so many countries. So we believe that accounting standards should not be containing the Sharia principles anymore. However, it should have a link to the Sharia standards because the Sharia standards are defining the characteristic of the transaction. And while it was, this purpose was being served earlier by, by, by a set of Sharia principles contained as appendix to the main accounting standard, we believe that this practice is no more needed. So all our new standards do not have Sharia and Sharia, Sharia principles contained therein, rather they are referring to the Sharia standards. That in the, do we have any comment on this chapter two? Any comments, any questions? Okay, let me continue. In this chapter, chapter three, we talk about users' objectives and limitation of financial information. So who are the users, who are the primary users, who are the secondary users? In the primary users, we include the quasi-equity holders. So it means that the financial statements should have necessary disclosures for things attributable to the quasi-equity holders. But other than that, general principles here are more or less close to IFRS. Regulators and government agencies also are users, but they are not primary users, means that the financial statements are not prepared mainly for regulatory purposes and they may have their own regulatory requirements for that. As, this is a very long standard, so I am skipping some of the paragraphs. So if anybody amongst you feels there is a need to, for a comment or they want to make a remark or they want to ask a question, please feel free for that. But I will be, because of, in the benefit of time, I will be skipping a number of paragraphs here. So these are the, this, this section, paragraph eighteen provides the common information needs of general purpose information. In item B, we particularly talk about information that can assist in evaluating the institution's compliance with principles of Sharia in all financial and other dealings through reflecting on the nature of transactions, other events and conditions by virtue of their recording and reporting. Other than that, other common principles in more, in this section mostly are close to IFRS and other generally accepted accounting principles. The question, Brother Munir has a question, raised a question here. May SSB of the institution supervise the ruling of Sharia standard issued by AOFI? I do not want to go into this detail right now because as I mentioned, this principle is a governance principle. Here we have just referred to it because we wanted to set up the hierarchy. However, the answer is, our answer is However, the answer is, according to AUF governance standards, the answer is no. However, in case of certain countries, they have given more powers to the respective Sharia board. But as per AUF governance framework and as per a number of governance frameworks that we have in different, seeing in different countries where AUF Sharia standards are adopted, the Sharia supervisory board of the institution is not authorized to supersede the rulings of Sharia standard. The objectives of financial reporting and accounting and reporting are with regard to determining the rights and obligations of different parties in line with fairness and ethical values etc. And with regard to the enhancement of managerial and productive capabilities of the institution and achievement of established goals, what we call stewardship, to provide useful information for the financial statement users. General purpose financial statements, when we talk about normal financial statements, these are general purpose financial statements. So in this chapter and maybe in the next two chapters, at lot of places, we will be talking about GPFS, that is general purpose financial statements. So the common financial statements are there and this framework mainly deals with general purpose financial statements although it has some guidance on the specific purpose financial reporting as well. So general purpose should be providing the nature of operations and transactions which in turn should enable to user determine the level of compliance with Sharia principles and rules and the institution's objectives as well. And then about the economic resources and claims means assets and liabilities and other events and conditions and balances. Then we have different risks related reporting, liquidity position related reporting, about the claims on certain assets or business, about, this should be, item number D is important that information should be there in the financial statements enabling determination of zakah for the Sharia conscious users. Then discharge of fiduciary responsibilities and social responsibilities. These are our objectives specifically added by AUF. Limitations, general purpose financial statements cannot provide you all the information that you need about an entity. It is not possible, there is a cost versus benefit consideration as well and there are, you know, as you increase the level of disclosure and level of reporting, finding the necessary information becomes more and more difficult. So normally, they are one of the sources and not the only source. So there have to be multiple sources if you want to have enough information about an entity. There must be multiple sources of information although financial statements remain a primary purpose for that, the general purpose financial statements. There are some limitations. For example, the financial effect is there and financial accounting is usually not able to produce information to assist in evaluation of institution's ability to achieve its objectives because financial information has its own limitations. But anything that cannot be calculated in financial matters is not reported easily. Financial accounting does not differentiate through its processes between the performance of the institution and the management. This is one of the very important part, that institution may perform a few things by chance, by the economic factors, by the external factors. But it might not necessarily be reflecting the true nature of the institution's performance at divided between the general performance of the institution and how good the management is in stewardship or management function. So this is also one of the main limitations. The information currently provided by financial accounting is historical. So whenever we prepare financial reports, they are historical data. So they may not be a true reflection of how the results would be. So if you take a decision on for investment in entity, that is based on the historical data. But you don't know what is going to happen in future. So just we can take this example as of now, that you right now, you cannot judge any, even a good company that has always been performing very well, historical data is all there but we cannot judge anything about the future. So this is one of the major limitations. To a significant extent, financial reporting is based on estimates, judgments and model to financial effect. So some of the calculations like provisioning and so many other depreciation, amortization, so many calculations are actually based on estimates which may in future actually be identified as different from the original estimate. The end result might be different from the judgment or estimate as applied during the preparation of financial statements. So these are the main limitations. Then we have a cost and benefit consideration that financial statements may be enhanced for the details may be given but it has to be according to the usage of right resources. You cannot spend too much resources and too many resources on something which is not to be, you can say which is not to be reflected without an unnecessary cost. Any questions? Categories of financial reports, as I mentioned, include the general purpose and special purpose financial reports. General purpose are the main agenda point for this standard. I would like if the hearing is more interactive, honestly, not too many comments. So is it all, you know, whenever, it's not a training session. But in a training session, when I get situation like this that nobody is giving any comments, then I say either nobody can understand anything or otherwise I am too good. So I don't believe that I am too good. I hope there must be some questions and some comments, so we would be happy to take those comments, please. Now we come to the primary statements. The primary financial statements include the balance sheet, what we call the statement of financial position. The statement of income and other comprehensive income, as I mentioned earlier that now we are introducing the concept of a complete statement of income and other comprehensive income. So this concept is introduced and once the financial accounting standard one is finalized which include this one, it means that eventually we will be having some changes to some of our existing standards, including like for example wherever we have the fair value gains taken to equity in FAS 25 and FAS 33 etc., FAS 26. So there will be, there will be changes to that. Dr. Kabir Hassan has a question that is the AUF standard principle based on rule based. Sir, it's a very important question. We keep it, we keep it principle based, we keep it principle based but there are some situations where we have to put in a very specific rule and we put a rule only if there is a Sharia requirement. So some situations, we have, no, no, for sure it's not a dumb question, sir, it is a very important question. So for example, with regard to general products, we have principle based approaches. So we define that this type of product should be done like this and this type of product should be done like this. However, there are some specific Sharia rules as well. And while in some situation, those rules can be translated into principles and we can write it down as a principle but in some situations, it may not be written as a principle in particular. So for example, there can be some situations where we have, where we have, I would say that a Sharia rule that results in a specific type of accounting treatment. Now, a principle based approach would generally be followed by AUF not only in developing the standard but rather in implementing the standards as well. But if there is a very specific Sharia requirement for a very specific matter, we need to stick to that and in that situation, it is a rule based thing. But these are very, normally these are very, not too many situations. On the accounting side, doctor, if you allow me to clarify, on the accounting side, we have two major standard setters. The biggest is, we all know that is the Financial Accounting Standard Board, IFRS. And the second one is US FASB, which is not followed in multiple countries. I think one or two small countries actually still follow it. Earlier, a lot of countries used to like refer to it as a guidance. But what we see that US FAS and US GAAPs are very, very detailed and they go to the rule level. And IFRS, on the other hand, has kept the things from day one on a principle based approach. As I have been mentioning time to time, that we are trying to, we are trying to, we are trying to bridge the gaps with the generally accepted accounting principles which mainly means IFRS. So it means that the core principles of accounting that we are referring to are mainly close to IFRS. So hence, these are principle based. So from the accounting part, I would say we are principle based. But with regard to certain specific Sharia requirements, only these are the conditions where we put a rule and we say that no general principle is there but this rule applies here. There is another question from brother Munir. What is additional on point thirty one to C to B when both are related to income? Brother Munir, the point number thirty one C is related to the quasi equity. Means that we are talking about it as a new statement. If you remember in the beginning, I mentioned to brother Harun to take a note because we need to mention it as a change from the previous one as well. Item number B is the general statement of income and comprehensive income which can be one statement of comprehensive income or can be a statement of income and a statement of other comprehensive income. These both options are allowed by IFRS, so we also allowed both options. However, item number C is related to income and attribution related to quasi equity only. So the main quasi equity normally all Islamic banks have is the unrestricted investment accounts or the PLS deposits that you call. But additionally, they may include Sukuk and certain other transactions. So all these, all the income and attribution related to the quasi equity will be presented in a, this is a proposal in the new FAS one and this framework, that these are important and relevant for the users of financial statements and while we have started considering the quasi equity holders as a primary stakeholder of an institution because technically maybe they own like fifty to seventy percent of the institution. So that's why we introduce this new statement. Then we have a statement of owner's equity for financial reporting period, a change in owner's equity, statement of cash flows, a statement of changes in off balance sheet assets under management and statements related to the kafal operations. And there can be multiple statements related to that. Coming to primary statements, the next section actually provides the details with regard to what are the contents of these primary statements. Mostly, these are close to IFRS and other generally accepted accounting principles, not major differences, no major differences there with regard to these ones, except for as I mentioned that we have one or two additional statements. Coming to the elements of financial statements, elements are assets, liabilities. We discussed the definition already, quasi equity, owner's equity, income and expenses. Coming to income, we believe income is of two types. And this, again, this main categorization is close to IFRS, that income is primarily of two types. Number one is transfer of promised goods or services to customers. And number two is gross increases in assets or liabilities. So gross increases in assets or liabilities are generated as gains or profits or rents etc. While the transfer of promised goods or services is about transferring the service or transferring the goods. With regard to these principles, we have brought up the five step model which is in line with the IFRS five step model, that you need to identify the contract and identify the performance obligations, determine the transaction price, allocate the transaction price to the performance obligations and recognize revenue. Let me make a statement here, we have brought this to, in line with IFRS, the same five step model we have brought in line with IFRS and we believe that there is nothing wrong from Sharia perspective as well. But with regard to implementation of the same, there might be some differences because of some of the conceptual issues with regard to determining what is the performance obligation in a transaction. Like lot of people may consider a murabah transaction to be a financing transaction. So if you consider it to be a financing transaction, you may determine that performance obligation as a provision of finance, like providing cash is the performance obligation against which you get earning. However, from the Sharia perspective and from the true nature of Islamic finance transactions perspective, we believe that the performance obligation in a murabah transaction is delivery of goods. So it means that in a conventional model, in a murabah transaction, you can recognize revenues from day one while in case of, in case of Islamic finance transaction and considering AUF framework, you will consider that the murabah transaction has a performance obligation of delivery of goods and since till the time, goods are not delivered to the customer, there is no revenue recognition. So this model, as I mentioned, has very much significance. And while I would say again that it is a principle based model but yet it has certain implementation issues with regard to Islamic finance transactions and obviously further details are provided, not in the framework but in the standard but some of the issues related to the fairness and truthful presentation and faithful presentation and substance over form versus uniformity of substance or form etc. These are actually going to be discussed later. Any comments on the elements, then we have expenses? Paragraph forty seven is important with regard to income. There are situations in which it is considered more just and equitable to defer all or certain portion of the revenue and to amortize the same over a period of time to achieve faithful presentation for all stakeholders if one or both of the following conditions are met. A equity and quasi equity of different stakeholders is utilized to execute the transactions and funds are kept involved over a period of time and it is more just and equitable to provide return on such funds over a period of time. And or the institution has a right to provide a discount in case of early payment by the customer and there is a reasonable probability that the institution shall exercise its right of providing a discount in such case. So this actually, this paragraph particularly forty seven is very important with regard to the deferment of accounting profit treatment, like deferred profit treatment that we apply in some of the murabah and other transactions. So this one provides the fundamental basis for those treatments. Then we have section on expenses and return on quasi equity. Just Sister Farida noted down, there is a duplication in this presentation. I think this duplication is on the presentation only, not in the standard but there is a paragraph forty nine is duplicated. Elements of financial statements continuing profit or loss and then off balance sheet assets under management. AUF accounting standards believe that the control exists on some type of transactions of Islamic finance and control does not exist in some other types of Islamic finance. Generally speaking, we believe that the control does not exist in case of Islamic finance transactions related to wakala or restricted mudarba. There are too many details in this issue, so I am not going to discuss all of that but the point is that the assets that you do not control, rather you just manage them in a fiduciary capacity like wakala assets, like restricted mudarba accounts. In those situations, you need to have off balance sheet accounting treatment and there is a statement of off balance sheet assets under management which is presented. Now we have a few questions, let me take the questions. Those countries who have adopted AUF standards, do they have created their own financial statement templates according to AUF standards? Sir, this is a good question. What actually happens that under IFRS, when IFRS prepares the issues as standard, they normally do not provide illustrative financial statements. However, AUF is a small institution and that level of adoption is comparatively smaller. In case of IFRS, normally the big four firms and other technical, other firms and other technical experts, they develop their own reporting formats and in some countries, the regulator also prepare a reporting format. In case of AUF, since this is not there, so our financial accounting standard number one, the existing financial accounting standard number one contains the illustrative financial statements. Means that the whole reporting format is there. So those countries who adopt AOFI standards in entirety, they follow that one or some regulators have defined their own reporting framework, which considers AOFI and at times which may ignore some of the AOFI aspects. Coming back to, coming back to this standard, this time when we decided the financial accounting standard one, we believe that putting the illustrative financial statements in the main standard tax creates some confusions and creates some differences. Like another standard is saying something, but the FAS one illustrative framework is saying something. So what we, we have decided that the illustrative financial statements will continue to be issued by AOFI because as of now, the illustrative financial, we are, we are not confident that enough parties will be there in the market like before and others, who will be developing the reporting formats for the entities. So in, in this situation, we decided that we will be doing it, but we will be issuing it as a technical release. So it is part of the same project, this same project which has completed the framework will complete the, will complete the, the financial accounting standard one. The working group is the same and the part, the project, whole project is being done as a single project. And, and the illustrative financial statements are also part of the same project, the initial draft is done, but it has not been yet issued. Do we have a comment please? I can't hear clearly, can you just please repeat, who is there? I can't hear you clearly. Can you write it down? Okay, for countries or, or if I to adopt AOFI accounting standards, AOFI positioning its standard to be adopted fully as standalone or in combination of IFRS or others. We believe that we do not want to, actually we are trying to work in collaboration with IASB, International Accounting Standard Board in as far as possible, so we have conducted several meetings with them and we are part of their consultative group as well. So the idea is that we do not want to develop standards unless there is a Sharia requirement. So we do not want to do general accounting standards and we leave that area for to ISB, we have so many things to do. So we keep focused on Islamic finance transactions and Islamic financial institutions only. So in this situation, I can clearly say that our framework is implemented along with IFRS. But for sure, when you adopt AOFI framework, you have to change some of the treatments coming from IFRS, particularly those related to Islamic financial institutions and Islamic finance transactions. Coming to financial accounting process part, this next chapter, this is talking about some of the important aspects that are to be considered in the financial accounting process. And paragraph fifty-four particularly talks about the Sharia compliance, reflection of Sharia compliance in financial statements. Then we talk about de-recognition and derecognition criteria and we talk about ascent and liability recognition and derecognition. Assets and liabilities are financial rights and obligations that are recognized when they satisfy the prescribed criteria as per paragraph thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Changes in those rights and obligations are recognized when they result from continued transactions or other events during a given period. Derecognition is the removal of, they must not treat the criteria. An asset shall be derecognized once or as and when, the control of the asset is transferred to another party through sale or otherwise and there are no future economic benefits. We are, why I emphasizing on this one because of this explanation? In a trading transaction, derecognition of an asset should only be at the time of true sale of the asset. Transfer of control of an asset is an indicator of true sale and continuing involvement with the asset indicates and involves Sharia implication. These are, why I'm emphasizing on these matters? Because we know that the framework of AOFI and framework of IFRS and other generally accepted principles have been implemented with regard to the recognition and derecognition part at times in a, in a, in a, in a different manner. That means that under IFRS, something is not derecognized and under AOFI, it has been derecognized or vice versa. So that's why we have tried this time in the framework to clarify these things very clearly with regard to what are the AOFI's framework requirements are. And as I mentioned initially, that it is for the benefit of the AOFI's accounting board and obviously where the standard is silent for the benefit of the industry. Revenue recognition, we, we, we have discussed these five step criteria earlier. So normally the same will be followed on the, on that, on the, on the implementation part. But with regard to the, to the, to the revenue, I have a question here, let me take a question first. Sister Amal, what, can we replace residual interest? Do you have a suggested wording sister? Okay, we take the note of this point that Sister Amal is suggesting that if, if we can, if we can replace the term residual interest. So we will see and we'll, we'll take it to the working group that if we have, we can find another word. To be honest, in my, in my, my quick understanding, I cannot find another suitable word here. But we will take it to the working group and we'll ask them if they can find a better word that can reflect it better. On the revenue recognition, we have additional criteria. Residual value, okay, I think sister residual value might not be correct here. Dr. Inasul, I see your names are, whoever is attending the event, their names are, their names are added. Sister Farida and Sister Noor, whoever is attending the meeting, just, just make sure and match their names with the meeting. If your name was not already in the registration, please send an email for the registration part. Otherwise, I think that most of the names were already there, the names that I can see here, most of them were already there in the list of, in the list of registrations. On the revenue recognition part, there, there are certain conditions that are to be met. One of them is the institution has earned the right to receive the revenue. There should be an obligation on the part of other party to remit a fixed or determinable amount. And the amount of revenue should be known and could be collectible at a reasonable degree of uncertainty. We believe that these conditions, in addition to the five steps of determining the revenue, these ensure not only the better accounting treatment, but these also ensure the Sharia compliance with regard to revenue recognition. Expense recognition is normally in line with the, with IFRS and other generally accepted accounting principles. I do not have any very specific matter to discuss unless somebody has a comment. The recognition of gain or loss depends on the completion of a reciprocal or a non-reciprocal transfer resulting in the gain or loss. An example of reciprocal transfer is consummation of the sale of fixed asset that provides basis or recognition of gain or loss. An example of non-reciprocal transfer is occurrence of an event such as a natural disaster which results in a loss. The availability of sufficient competent evidential matter include indicating reasonably measurement appreciation or depreciation in values of recorded assets or liabilities as a result of change in supply and demand, like fair value gains and losses. So these are the criteria for recognition of gains and losses. Then we come to the measurement part. Mostly measurement part, we do not have any specific Sharia considerations. Most of the measurement parts are generally driven from the accounting principles and are not substantially different. However, with regard to the measurement part, there are some issues with regard to the measurement of then, then or receivables, which are established receivables. So those are the main areas or any instrument which is reflected, reflecting a then at the, at the, at the back end as underlying product. So in those situations, we, we, we consider that this is an important aspect that needs to be considered from Sharia perspective. Other than that, mostly the measurement attributes are coming similar to IFRS and other accounting standards. Then we have the concept, the concept, the matching concept and that the expenses, gains, revenues and gains should be matched with expenses and losses. This is also in line with Sharia principles, we believe that, so we believe that these principles are in line with Sharia principles. Then we have the concept of historical cost, fair value, what are the situations where fair value should be there and fair value should not be there? What are the, what are the factors to determine reliability of fair value? Control we have discussed already. So now coming to chapter five. I believe if you allow me, if you allow me, because we are running, you know, a bit short of time. We have, we have around half an hour left, we started ten fifteen minutes late and as I mentioned, the standard is very long. So if you allow me, I will take you first to the last chapter. And the reason is that the last chapter discusses about the Sharia foundations from where the accounting principles are driven. And I believe that that chapter is very important for the benefit of the public hearing and we would like to take comments on that. And if the time allows, we'll come back to these chapter five and six after that. So I'll take you through, right now to the, to the, chapter five and six are mainly the general accounting principles. There is, there is one very important debate in chapter six, which I'll, I think I should address before going forward. Other than that, we will come back to chapter five and six later. If you believe chapter five and six are general accounting concepts, out of that only one most important issue is the faithful presentation. Originally, the, the, the accounting standard use, use the wording substance over form. Now, the main framework of IFRS discusses substance over form, but the phenomena they mentioned as a faithful presentation, the requirement they mentioned as a faithful presentation. The information should reflect a faithful representation of what its purpose to represent. There should be a close correspondence between such information and the reality. However, there is no general rule to permit the evaluation of different methods of accounting based on this quality of accounting information. Whether a particular method of accounting will produce information that is more representationaly faithful than information produced by another method depends on the facts and circumstances of each case. Following aspects of faithful presentation are more relevant here, as discussed in paragraph one ten to one twenty-one, true and fair view, substance and form and neutrality. True and fair view, the financial statements are frequently described as showing a true and fair view of or as presenting fairly the financial position, performance and changes in position, financial position of the institution. The application of conceptual framework, in particular the qualitative characteristics and appropriate accounting concepts and the passes normally resulted financial statements that convey what is generally understood as a true and fair view of or as presenting fairly such information. Coming to substance and form, if information is to represent faithfully the transactions and other events that it, that it purports to represent, it is necessary that they are accounted for and presented in accordance with its substance and economic reality as well as the legal form. The financial reporting involves consideration of the substance of an economic phenomena as well as its legal form. If you see the wording that in our paragraph one hundred eleven and one hundred twelve is different from the conventional, normal, understood treatment of substance over form. The concept of substance over form says that accounting should be done according to the economic substance of the transaction ignoring the legal form which is there. However, in Islamic finance, AOFI since beginning has been following the concept of uniformity of substance and form and that, that both the substance and form, either of them cannot be ignored and both of them should be the same. Several Sharia compliant products and transactions entered into by Islamic finance institutions, not only in form but in substance, are different from the conventional financial products and instruments. Consideration of substance, substance and form from Sharia perspective may mandate special accounting treatments for several products and transactions. Accordingly, they need a set of accounting principles suitable to reflect their respective economic reality in true spirit of Sharia principles and rules. We have a question here, let me take that comment. Okay, sorry, it is a comment from, from the team. Everybody, all participants kindly send us your email address for confirmation of your attendance today. Email at ph@AOFI.com for any further clarifications. Okay. Financial statements are frequently described as showing a true and fair view of present family, the application of conceptual. Sorry, it was. There might be an error in this presentation, let me check. Okay, sorry, sorry. Sister Farida, can you check this paragraph?
Pradhamar paragraph, so okay, hundred and fourteen.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I need to re-read it. Financial statements are frequently described as showing a true and fair view of or presenting fairly the financial position, performance and changes the financial position of the institution, the application of conceptual framework, in particular the collective. Sister, I think there is a problem in this one. If you can match it with paragraph one one ten, one ten. Let me come to paragraph one one five, sister, just recheck, I think in the presentation there is an error. For, if information is to represent faithfully the transaction and, and other event that it purports to represent, it is necessary that they are accounted for and presented in accordance with the substance and economic reality as well as the legal form. Normally form and substance shall go together, however at times substance overrides when Sharia principles and rules accept the same. See example in paragraphs, so we have paragraphs one one seven for three explanations, let me take you there. There is another comment. Dr. Kabir Hassan, your question is, are you referring to micro level or macro level interpretation of form versus substance? Sir, we are, when we are talking in accounting, we go for micro level, we go for the transaction level. So this principle is to be applied on each and every transaction and each and every balance separately. From the accounting perspective, you have to apply it micro and not only at micro but also at, at each transaction level or a class of transaction level. So, so I point to situation, one is when substance overrides form when Sharia principles and rules accept the same. At times, the form, form is interpreted and understood in language, but the rule is also considered as true substance and overrides any other understanding of substance. So we need to consider these examples. The discussion of substance or form is central to the idea of having different sets of accounting treatments for several Sharia compliant transactions. Financial statements should represent economic reality both in substance and form. The Sharia principle that rule envisages that form is not devoid of substance and neither can override the other. Financial reporting such, thus should recognize the delicate balance that exists between the concepts of substance and form. We have another comment here sir. Brother Suliman, in AOFI's reference to the legal form that here, does this refer to Sharia or English law and how to manage difference in practice? Brother Suliman, this is a very good question. And the example one one seven one etcetera are going to consider that, so I'm taking you there. Explanation one. Sister Farida, I believe there is an error in this one, so let me share the example from the, from the PDF file. Can you all see the, see the screen? Can anybody confirm to me that the screen is visible clearly?
Yes, it's visible.
Okay, my apologies, on behalf of our team, you know, these days are difficult, the team is working partially from home and partially from office and so there might be a few errors in the presentation. That I have seen, the presentation is only, they have converted the, the file into that, but my apologies on their behalf. So let's follow the, the, the PDF version because the, the risk of errors is not there. So I'm just answering the comments of Brother Suliman and Brother Kabir Hassan in this part with regard to the, with regard to the substance of form. So I'm taking you to first to the, to the explanation one. In certain circumstances, Sharia principles and rules may consider substance independent of legal form or certain specific legal requirements insofar as the requirements of Sharia principles and rules are followed. For example, in certain jurisdictions, the registration records kept by the registrar or the authority. Brother Suliman, your, in your question, the English law may be proof of ownership of title of property. However, Sharia principles and rules take the view that contracts entered into by the counterparties are biting from Sharia perspective and hence are sufficient proof of ownership. In, in these situations, in certain circumstances, in certain, certain situations, the concept of beneficial ownership will also be relevant. So in this example, we are saying that at times, there are, there are legal requirements as per the English law or the respective country's law. Which might not be fulfilled, like for example, transfer in the registrar's record, transfer of title property in the registrar or the authority's records. But according to Sharia, the agreements that have created a, a, a transfer of ownership as a counter deed or as a, as a, as a partial by, by a musharaka agreement or something. In those situations, if the Sharia accepts it, in that situation, we, we accept that. So as I mentioned earlier and again and again I mentioned, that Sharia is the paramount. So if Sharia considers that to be a sufficient proof of ownership, even if as under agency, it may be held in the title, the title may under agency be held in the name of the customer, of the customer on a continuing basis. And this is still on those situations, we will consider that what is the, as I mentioned, what is the sufficient proof of ownership of title of property as per Sharia? We will accept that. The second example is, from Sharia perspective, the substance over transactions should not be interpreted in the context of conventional accounting approaches. For example, certain experts consider Ijarah Muntaiya with Tamlik transactions equaling to conventional finance thesis which may be against the very nature of such Sharia compliant transactions. Expansion three, as an example from Sharia perspective, a unilateral undertaking for its transactions to be, to be executed on a future date is not equivalent to a contract and cannot be accounted for as such. Similarly, two contracts or a contract and a promise may not be combined as a single transaction because of basic prohibitions for the same. Accordingly, the treatment for most purchase undertakings etc, as assigned by conventional experts on the connotation of substance over form may not be considered acceptable under Sharia. So these are a few examples where we are saying that in some situations, we may be able to accept a definition coming from the, interpretation coming from the accounting side. But, but we have to first see what is correct as per Sharia. Now, this paragraph is very important. The truth is that the importance of legal form in Islamic finance does not mean that a person can merely prepare a compendium of legal documents in term of the transaction as Sharia compliant based on documents without complying with their requirement, requirements and spirit. As Sharia compliant procedure has to be followed, agreed by the Sharia scholars and even a little deviation may transform the transaction into impermissible. The Islamic financing transactions must follow the substance as well as their respective legal form should be compliant to the nature of the transaction as well as to the Sharia rulings. We can call this concept, the uniformity of substance and form, there is a typo error here, it is uniformity of substance and form. Any further comments on this? Okay, so now, as I mentioned that chapter five and six are mainly related to the accounting general concepts, however, there was, most important of this one was here. There are a few more as well, one more I would like to touch upon, I think, that is, that would be uniformity. So let me touch upon that one also before we just go to the main Sharia principles. We have these concepts of understandability, reliability, completeness, verifiability, consistency. Now comparability is one part, which I believe that we need to understand from Islamic accounting perspective. Comparable financial information allows users to identify real similarities and differences in the institution's performance in relation to its own performance over time and in relation to the performance of other institutions. The usefulness of financial accounting information is therefore enhanced by the use of similar measurement or methods of disclosure to similar events. While there, while there is some old, while there is some overlap between comparability, reliability and relevance. The many aspects of comparability are important in providing useful financial accounting to users that a separate consideration seems to be warranted. It is important to understand that comparability does not mean and shall not be construed as equivalent to uniformity. Rather, comparability implies that the financial statements shall be comparable between and in respect of comparable entities and the comparable transactions and events. For information to be comparable, like things must look alike and different things must look different. Comparability of financial information is not enhanced by making unlike things look alike any more than it is enhanced by making, making like things look different. Comparability shall be able to consider and demonstrate the difference between different type of institutions and transactions. Considering the intrinsic nature, structure and the relevant risk profiles in respect of transactions and balances. Considering different type of transactions and balances in different entities as similar under the notion of comparability. For example, considering a conventional bank and its transactions and balances similar to those of an institution, Islamic financial institution cannot be justified. So the idea is that while the comparability is important, but comparability should not result in a situation that Islamic financial institutions are pushed to prepare financial statements similar to the conventional institutions. Because comparability should result in like things look alike and unlike things should not look alike. This, I would like to take one minute here, additional minute, because at times we have to talk to some of the, some of even non-Muslim brothers. Who are, who are not able to understand the things from the Sharia. Lot of you are here, when I mention, okay, this is a Sharia requirement, you will keep quiet. But, but for a, for a person who is coming mainly from a, from a non-Muslim or a secular background, it's not easy to understand. So for those people, normally our argument is that Islamic finance transactions have a different risk profile. Like normally I give example of a muraba transaction, that once a advance is paid for muraba, it is an unsecured credit risk. When we get the inventory, even if for a limited period of time, it is subject to operational risk and subject to market risk. Once this is sold to the customer, then it is a secured credit risk. So these are just few, just one example that how you can reflect all these stages of transactions and different risk profiles in one caption. That is one of the main reasons that we believe that Islamic finance transactions should be reflected in a manner that reflects the true nature and should, their, 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 these balances. And their, their balances and outcomes should not be clubbed in that, in the captions similar to the conventional institutions. And that's why we have emphasized significantly on this comparability versus uniformity part. Any comments? Okay, then, as I mentioned, we'll, we'll take you through to the seven, chapter seven. Chapter seven is about Sharia principles and rules used as a foundation for the conceptual framework. They were, although we have been using these four principles for developing our standards earlier, but these were not documented at one place. More recently, as AOF, when we published our book on IFRS and Sharia based reporting, this table was part of it, but I do version of the table is now part of the framework. To provide guidance to people in with regard to selection of accounting principles coming from the Sharia side. So let me take, item number one. Sale is constituted, if you see, we have Sharia principles and rules and then there is a reference to relevant Sharia standard and then the accounting code principles. So Sharia principle is, sale is constituted, transfer of risk and reward including ownership and possession. Sale cannot, sale cannot take place before transfer of ownership and possession. Possession includes a relinquishment and enabling of transactions in it, in other words. Right to sell and does not complete without such right. A sale based, the accounting principles that are coming from these Sharia principles are, number one, a sale based transaction may not drive a return or profit unless. Possession and ownership being obtained, this transfer of. Criteria for asset recognition and derecognition shall be the risk and reward in accounting terms, the control whereby the control includes the right to variable returns. That is the right to profit, gains and risk loss being negative return and the right to use and enjoy benefits from the same and to power to govern as the possession includes the right to execute transactions on it. Item number two, two transactions in one are not acceptable as per Sharia. Prohibition of Safakatain, Kisafakah and Bevasala are very clear. Combining two transactions in one creates Gharrar and Jahal with regard to respective responsibilities which are both prohibited. Particularly combining two contracts for the same contract value, the, that is the value for one, one value for two contracts is impermissible. Combine two or more contracts for a contract and a promise can be acceptable if each one of them remains independent of each other and is executed separately. Creating a clearly identifying and implementing the elements of the contract separately. Different capacities of the parties in combined combination transactions shall be kept separate for all purpose, including seller, buyer, principal agent and guarantor etc. Accounting principles, two contracts or one contract and one promise shall be accounted for separately, duly distinguishing the respective risks, rewards and responsibilities of the parties. Respective accounting treatments shall be considered, shall be considering the respective capacities of the parties. Contract of sale and certain other relevant contracts executable on a future date is not allowed. For some contracts, a promise to execute a contract on a future date with pretty promised conditions may be acceptable. However, such contract does not execute automatically on the new date or after, or the promise does not automatically convert into a contract. Rather, a contract is executed on the date in line with the promise. No future contract can be directly accounted for in form of a recognition or derecognition of an asset and or corresponding liability. Similarly, a profit to be accrued on a transaction to be executed on a future. A promise generally may not be accounted for as it is either not binding or binding on one party only and additionally contains significant uncertainties. Possession includes physical or constructive possession. Constructive possession is acceptable evidence of ownership if acceptable by Sharia principles and norms including possession through agent. Agent's possession does not form possession as it is the possession of the principal and hence no sale or profit recognizing activity may take place. Sister Farida just note down the, the spelling of principle. Debt cannot be sold against cash or receivables, however, in certain situations, it may be transferred but at par value only. In a debt balance, the debtor has no right to a discount or rebate in case of early payment, however, the creditor has the right to offer a discount. However, this shall not be stipulated in the contract, it shall not be a common practice. Regulatory requirements in this respect need to be taken into consideration. Profit distribution in Sharia compliant effort transaction may take into consideration the accounting practices for allocation of profits over a longer term. Hawaala of debt is permissible but it does not constitute a sale of debt. No debt based monetary receivable payable can be accounted for at a value other than par value. Putting it either above value or below value would result in profit distributions to shareholders and particularly and prospective stakeholders which are not legitimate. This applies to both receivables and payables. Any comments? For all profit and loss based partnerships, the profit must be known, this is because they constitute the contracting and hence ignorance about it nullifies the core contract. In situations, in situations that's written on capital without actual determination of profit would not be permissible. For profit distribution, the principles of justice and equity are primary. Determination of profit and losses in line with Sharia contractual and customary, including accounting customary practices in the same hierarchy is a must for legitimate transactions. This applies to Islamic financial institutions and normal entities alike. A deferment of profit already legitimately earned is acceptable which results in more equitable, fair and just distribution of profits amongst stakeholders. This shall apply in normal circumstances to the debtor only. Capital must be protected before profit distribution in profit and loss based modes. All expenses shall be charged as well as necessary provisions and at times reserves shall be maintained to protect the capital before distribution of profits. This may include creating provisions or reserves against promises which may result in future losses which are reasonably determinable as of now. This argument may however not be valid for recognizing a future gain of any type as the basis is prudence and capital protection. Posi equity account holders and other profit and loss taking stakeholders, including common stakeholders are all partners and have proportionate ownership in residual assets either on the whole entity or limited pool basis. These can never be guaranteed with regard to principal or return thereon. These balances cannot be recorded as liability, these are specific type of equity, so either to be merged in equity or to be shown as a separate type of equity as applicable. The term quasi equity or redeemable capital may be used. Reba is prohibited and, and, and permissible transactions between knowledgeable willing parties are permissible. Accruing additional return on receivables and monetary balances for the passage of time or alternatively discounting receivables and monetary balances against early settlement generally tent amount to reba. In other words, time value of money is not acceptable while time value of economic resources is allowable. Primary accounting computation shall not be based on time value of money. Time value of economic resources including sales, profits, Ijarah rentals, service Ijarah payments etc shall be the primary basis of accounting. Time value of money as a reflection of time value of economic resources and a uniform measurement tool may be used for estimation of fair values, provisions, reserves etc but not as a primary accounting model. Fair value shall be the primary basis of liquidation for profit and loss determination. However, historical costs may be acceptable as per pre-agreed and per, as per norm accounting policies. Fair value is also the basis of zakah and inheritance. Accounting shall be according to fair values as maximum as possible. In other situations, historical cost accounting including depreciation, amortization and deferment may be acceptable in line with accounting norms and following the principles of fair, just and equitable distributions. Monetary items shall be subject to cost, however, in some situations, an effective rate of return method may be used for allocation of cost or profit on a fair, just and equitable basis without impacting the recognition of the receivable payable itself. No comments? A direct financial penalty particularly on late payments on debt is not acceptable as it may tent amount to reba. No further value accretion is acceptable on a day, however, a charity payment shall be directly attributable to a charity account rather than taken as income. Just noted down sister, assistant move and sister Farida just noted down charity payable, charity payable, here it should be attributable to charity payable or charity fund. As, setting of balances is not acceptable without will of the parties or when contractually allowed or where legally allowed. Unless there is a contractual right of setting of two or more balances, the same shall be presented separately. This applies to the receivables and payable as well as receivable and payables as should be there as well as the income and expenses. Similarly, it is also applied to reimbursements which should be appropriately presented, identifying the expenses and reimbursements properly. Currency of shirka shall be determined and all the capital rights of, rights and obligations shall be determined in the same currency. Accounts shall be made in the agreed currency and profit and losses should be determined in the same currency, other currency balances shall be translated accordingly. Commercial papers may not be traded or discounted and a future due commercial paper cannot be sold. A pool of assets primarily comprising of debt unless having at least fifty-one percent or thirty-three percent of tangible assets is not tradable. That is neither instrument based or such pool is tradable nor entry or exit in the same by that participants is allowed. Investment instruments for example, suku based on monetary assets cannot be valued at a value other than par value so that, so these cannot be fair value. No addition or accretion is allowed on parth, no service charges other than actual expenses can be recovered. Any load based transaction or equivalent always should be carried at cost. A sale or another remunerative or commutative transaction with Gharrar is impermissible. However, a tabarro non-remunerative contract like gift is acceptable even if it's Gharrar. Similarly, mutualities is acceptable, so risk sharing is acceptable, although risk trade is not acceptable. These are the basis for Islamic insurance model based on Takaful and mutual cooperation. Sharing and mutuality needs to be accounted for in a model suitable for the same and an accounting model based on risk trade is not acceptable for the, to the same. Accordingly, the Islamic insurance accounting shall be a combination of mutuality for interacting business and commercial. Accordingly, the Islamic insurance accounting shall be a combination of mutuality for interacting business and commercial for non-interacting like investment equity purposes. It is permissible for the institution to provide services and to charge fee against services, it is important to identify the service obligation work that for a period and obligations and determine ujra parameters. Fee revenue shall be based on the actual concept linked with the service delivery and ignoring other factors as it is charged against permissible service only. Accordingly, the fee recognition in all structures of Islamic banking, insurance and capital markets as well as support shall be based on the delivery of service and not combined with other contracts. All balance sheet assets under management represent the amounts whereby the owners authorize the mudarib to invest them on the basis of mudarib in a specific project or investment per program. Considering that the investors are owners and the mudarib has no governance powers limited to follow the instructions hence. Assets representing the same are not in control of the investor, accordingly, these shall be all balance sheet accounts. Constructive liquidation of mudarib and musharqa ventures for profit distribution is acceptable. Accounting for shall reflect the most suitable just and equitable figures so that the distribution and allocation of profits. And losses reflect the rightful interest and the liabilities of the parties. Agency is the act of one party delegating the act to another one, another to act on its behalf in which. In what can be a subject matter of delegation, the principle should have the right to dispose of the asset in question or otherwise a full capacity over the subject matter. Investment agency means appointing another person to invest and grow one's wealth with or without fee. The relationship of agency shall be kept separate from the transactions from the parties, for example, in case of muraba. Wakala in these types include, including particularly the investment agency determines the capacity of the party whereby the principle has the ownership and the responsibility liability for the subject matter. While the agent works only on his behalf, accordingly, all assets and liabilities related to an agency arrangement shall be recorded in the books of the principle. In other words, these will be top ten of balance sheet for the agent. The institution must disclose the, the institution must disclose the method of profit calculation. The institution must specify the significant terms and conditions in the contract, however, the. Accounting policies and significant treatments may be transparently presented in the financial statements. It is permissible to adopt Sharia compliant customary accounting practices to calculate profits. It is permissible to adopt Sharia compliant customary practices as long as they do not contradict any Sharia ruling. Nasudulillah ala nooh states that what the Muslims do good, then it is good in the side of Allah. The profit computation for the, for the projections as well as for the purpose of accounting and distribution among the stakeholders may be based on customary accounting practices. Insofar as these are in line with Sharia. Contractual relationship between the two parties is not affected by accounting profit recognition method, accounting shall reflect a true and fair and transparent view. Considering that stakeholders including shareholders and other prospective stakeholders. And not the customer for example and Ijarah customer who still might need to pay an amount different from the amount recognized in the balance sheet of the Islamic financial institution. So this is, we have completed this chapter, effective date will be, will be like with fas one. So most probably it will become applicable with the, with fas one. It will become immediately for the, as soon as it is adopted, it will become immediately applicable for the accounting board. But for the, for the, for the authoritative part, its effective date will be as per fas one. We have skipped some of the minor sections which were related to general accounting. But our time is almost over, so what I request now, if we have any comments and questions. So we can take those comments and questions, otherwise we can, we can conclude today's meeting. I can see mashallah thirty two for people, thirty two means two, we are so twenty nine, twenty nine are mashallah online. So we can see total is thirty three but there are three, we are three, so. I think twenty, twenty nine or twenty eight mashallah participants are there. So it's very, very, very good participation. I know that sharing questions while, while in webinar is not easy. But still if we have any questions, please, I think one question is coming. Brother Umar is asking about a recording. Normally, normally the recording is not available, we make recording for making sure that we do not miss out any of the questions. So normally we do not share the recording as a matter of policy, so I think that recording will not be available, I'm sorry for that. Thank you brother Dr. Kabir, thank you very much, slides will be shared but sister Farida. And sister no, you need to recheck the slides again with the content of the, of the PDF file, there were two, three differences, that's why. In the later part I referred to the, to the, to the, to the PDF file. So we will share, inshallah brother Adnan, Bahatir is asking for the slides, so these will be shared. PDF file and slides both should be shared with all the participants. Those who want to have a certificate of attendance, they can, they can send, send an email for that. Any comments or any questions? Before we conclude? Okay, I think that we are not having any other questions, so I would like to, I would like to thank everybody for being present today. And I would like to thank my team particularly sister no, sister Farida, brother Maj. They have worked very, very hard for this public hearing, you know that these are very difficult times. But AUF, Alhamdulillah, we have a commitment from our team that things should not stop, the work should not stop, our process should continue. And that's how we are working with our boards, working groups, Alhamdulillah, we are trying our level best to make sure that all the. All the things are continuing, brother Munir, yes for sure, all of you who have any comments, whenever you have time, please take your time to send those comments to. Accounting@AUF.com and or those who have my email address or sister Farida's email address, they can send to them as well. But whenever you have comments on the accounting side, you can always send them, accounting@AUF.com or you can always send to me. Thanks for all of you being available, I can see some very senior names being there. And many, many thanks to all of you for being there, taking time out. And it's honestly, it has been a pleasure being with you today. And now we sign off, thank you very much, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Slides will be shared again, as I mentioned, slides and the presentation and the PDF file will be shared as soon as possible. But sister Farida, you just need to recheck that the slides are updated, salaamualaikum.
Yes, we will reach a council. Thank you.